Welcome back, everyone. Whoa, thank you, Tony. Is that loud enough? Okay, I'm gonna sit just like this, so Tony, just do your thing however you want to do it. And I want to remind everyone before we start that my sweetie Bev over there and Barb are collecting questions, so if you have questions you want our Ward Four candidates to address, please get them to one of those people and they'll bring it up to me. We have one candidate who is in a hospital and he cannot be here tonight. His doctor said, "No, you're not going to go to a candidate's forum tonight." He called me this afternoon and told me that's Swede down on the end. Thank you. Swede Seltzer. And we have one candidate who could not be here and did send me a statement that the League has always been willing to have read or read while we're here. So I'm gonna start with that one. It's from Mark Hedlund. "League of Women Voters, thank you for the invite tonight's forum. I unfortunately couldn't make it as I have a family commitment. I appreciate the chance to give a little insight as to who I am with this statement. I have been a proud resident of Morehead for close to 20 years. I have two daughters, Annabelle, eleven, Ivy, seven, both who are active in their school and extracurricular activities. I am active in a nonprofit such as the F5 Project and I'm a proud donor of the Young Life FM as well as many other wonderful nonprofits. I'm currently a Realtor with, is it Exit Realty, Heartland. Our current office is located in Grand Forks, however, only work the Morehead Fargo area and surrounding community market. We have plans to open an office in 2020 in Fargo, which I will be the broker-owner of at that time. My motto is to serve and be of service. I am passionate in what I do and how I serve. I ran for council last year against incumbent Chuck Hendrickson and lost by a close margin of only 150 votes. I believe Morehead has a great momentum with what is changing downtown. As someone who works real estate, I see that the growth can do, what growth can do for Morehead community and how it can impact their economy. I am excited to be part of helping Morehead continue to grow in many ways. However, as all of this is good, we must also remember that businesses that have been here and have been loyal to Morehead over many years." We must, okay, we must remember the businesses that have been here and have been loyal to Morehead over many years. We cannot let them feel as they're, feel like we are only focusing on the new and need to make sure we are supportive of them and their needs. I am also a supporter of our public service and our school district. These are the critical areas in keeping our community safe and beautiful and making sure our youth is provided the best education we can give them. Giving them the support we need for their jobs, to do their jobs efficiently is key to a strong and vibrant city. As your next council member, I plan to be a voice for the citizens of the city as a whole, not just my ward. As we continue on this path of growth, we need to be aware of what is happening in the present but constantly thinking of the future. Let us continue to make Morehead the city we're all proud of, to call home for the years to come. Best regards, Mark Hedlund." This is, this forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters. There are several of them here tonight. They're helping with the forum. If you have any questions, make sure you write them on a little note card and we will ask them. The format for this evening is we will ask all of the candidates to provide a one-minute intro to why they're running for the City Council. They will have two minutes to respond to questions that are asked and then they will have a two-minute closing. And our good friend Carol, sitting in the front row here, has little signs that you should pay attention to, candidates. And when your time is up, we would appreciate that you wrap up your answer as quickly as you possibly can. Okay, now, I have here, I gotta make sure I have the right people here.
That's why we need our names on this side.
Yeah, so I can't see.
Well, I always tell students that that's silly because they forget their names.
I haven't called on you yet.
Sorry.
It's the only time I get to be in charge. Come on. We'll start with opening statements for our candidates and remind the candidates to use the microphones for two reasons, so that people in the room can hear you, but also that you can be heard when this is rebroadcast by MCAM. So Jeremiah Jones is the first. We'd have your opening statement, please.
All right, thank you. My name is Jeremiah Jones. I am not from Morehead. I am not from Minnesota. I'm not even from the Midwest. I was born and raised in eastern Oregon. And one of the reasons why I am running for council is, to put it simply, I am the next generation that's going to be living here. I'm the next voice that has to be start voicing the opinions of my generation and people younger than me. I have a good foothold of the new technologies that are coming along that we use every single day and as a city, we need to adapt and grow with it, not push it away. And I feel that being that younger, fresh face that has an outside perspective is one of the best reasons I could think of to run and plus, it's just always good to have a little change in office. So, put it simply, that's just where it came from.
Thank you. Our second candidate is Steve Lindas.
Hi, my name is Steve Lindas. I'm running for City Council from Ward Four. Thank you to League of Women Voters for having us. It's nice to be on this side of the camera. It's always been my two-way place to get information. So, I raised my family in Morehead. I've lived here 20 years with my wife and my kids have fledged and are living elsewhere. And this is a fantastic place to raise a family and I want the opportunities that my family and my kids had to be available for all kids and to people, both young and old. So, I want Morehead to be a place where everyone can grow and thrive. And so you might ask, "What kind of skills do I bring?" So, as a scientist and educator, I have skill sets that are actually very useful and unique for this work. So, I'm, as a physicist, I'm used to taking complex problems and breaking them up into little parts and making them solved. As an educator, as a physics teacher, actually, I'm used to having kids come with hard problems and saying, "Hey, how do you do this?" and working with them. So educating and communicating is key to making our place a community where everyone can grow. Thanks.
Thank you. Our third candidate tonight is James McInstra.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us and inviting us. My name is James McInstra. I've lived in Morehead since 2014. I'm originally from Freeport, Illinois, and grew up in a family that was just really committed to public service, not always through elected office, but through things like being election judges, volunteers, things like that. I've worked most of my career in both Catholic education as well as human services. Currently, I work with churches united. And I'm running really to bring the voice of the voiceless and that, you know, the people that are marginalized, we have a large homeless population in Morehead, a large immigrant population. I'm married to an Iraqi native and I really want to see the voice of the marginalized, the outcast, those that have really not been represented on City Council, represented on City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And from now on, I'm going to refer to these candidates by their first name, so, and we're gonna go down. Our order is just to increase by one each question as we go down. Okay, question number one. "The street department is not doing an adequate job of street cleaning or snow removal. What would you do to help solve these citywide problems?" And Steve, you get to start.
Well, I guess one of the issues would be trying to figure out exactly where the streets aren't being taken care of and then have a communication, talking to the department that's involved, so Public Works. I know I've had potholes or sharp objects in the street as I've been running or biking around and they seem very responsive. So, I guess one of the issues I'd have to figure out is exactly what is the problem and then try to find a solution to it.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I would first want to look at, you know, what exactly is the problem, where, kind of get some specifics and so forth as to where the problem is, when it occurred, how long has it occurred? And then, you know, as a council member, take it up the chain of command and that, you know, you know, alert, you know, the staff in Public Works and that. And then certainly, once I get an answer, I would want to relay that answer back to the constituent that inquired about it, you know, just not leave them hanging, but at least, you know, be responsive to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
All right, so this has actually happened to me currently on my street right now. I call very regularly asking why chip ceiling rocks have not been swept up on my street and I continuously get, "We're looking into it." How I would handle this as a person of authority towards over them would be ask them very specific questions to get very specific answers and make it available for everybody because all I feel we are getting from some of our heads of department is excuses. And I think as a taxpayer, if I have an idea what's going on, even an honest answer of, "We're just too busy, we're gonna get to it soon as we can," will suffice to a lot of us that have these questions. We don't want to be told, "We're gonna get to it." We don't want to be told another line. We want to be told something that was tangible so we can accept that and go, "Okay." When my next-door neighbor comes over and asks me, "Well, what did you find out?" Well, they're gonna get to it, but they said they're literally behind, they're hoping to get to it in the next couple of weeks. Those are concrete answers that we as people want to know about and that's how I feel I would handle any situation like that, including the streets, like I'm feeling right now.
Thank you. On to the next question. Jim, you get this, and I'm gonna combine two of them because one of them is a really short answer, I'm guessing. First of all, "How many City Council meetings have you attended this past year?" That's a simple answer. And the second part is, "Should Morehead City Government be run as a business or a social institution?" Jim?
Well, I attended parts of two City Council meetings. And, I mean, I would, I guess, coming from a background in human services and I've worked at community action agencies, both here in Morehead and in Detroit Lakes, as well as in Illinois, you know, I think City Council should be run similar to how a community action agency governs itself in terms of having a board of directors, you know, kind of, you know, in the community action, they have come from specific fields, including representation from low income as well. I think that's important, but I think, you know, I think City Council, first and foremost, that we're public servants and we're human servants, you know, in terms of services to the people and that we're not out to make money or a profit for the city and that we're to, you know, provide services. So I think our focus should really be people-centered in terms of how we conduct our business in our meetings.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
So that's a little bit of a complex question now, isn't it? We all serve of the people, for the people, so that would be considered kind of a social institution. But we do have to run the city like a business because like any other business, whether it be profitable or non-profitable, you have to answer the questions of where is the money going? Where are the resources going? That's not a social institution. A social institution is just kind of, "Hey, how you doing over there? Are you getting things done?" You bet. We, it's, so it's a complex of both. We need them both. We need them to equally run. We need to be not too much business, not enough social communication. We need to be a little bit more social, maybe a little bit less business on certain things. So that's the more dynamic of trying to figure that equation, trying to figure that formula out. And so, how would I do it? I would try to find the best formula possible and it always changes and you have to change with it. The people that's around and you represent will always ask complex questions revolving around business and around social interactions. You just gotta find that happy medium that's gonna answer those questions for everyone, not just my Ward Four, but for the city that I represent as well.
Thank you. Steve?
So I've been to one City Council meeting in person, but you watch City Council meetings and you can go to the website and get lots of information. And it's not always easy to find all the information that I want, so communication can always be improved, but that's true probably of anything. And this, our city is both business and social institution. You obviously have a budget and you're trying to figure out where and how to spend money, but that process is done by engaging in communication, so that's the social part of it. We have to be responsive to what the citizens want. The other aspect of it, though, is any city government is going to need to plan for the future. If we don't plan for the future, we're gonna be in, not in good situation. So, you know, that gets into a point where you have to have a social connection with the people around you so that you're actually explaining to people why you're making decisions. So, you know, your business doesn't necessarily have to explain to the citizens what's going on, but if you're a city government, you're gonna say, "Why are we making these decisions?" So, you know, maybe there is a reason why the streets are not getting repaired, you know, maybe we don't have sufficient support for the street repair. And so, having that conversation with the citizens so that they know what, why, and how their money is being spent. And then if there's a need to actually address something that might be either short-term or long-term for situations that need to change, you communicate with people and let them know why.
Thank you. Jeremiah, it's your turn. I'm gonna read the question as it is and I'll make a little comment. "Have you ever questioned the increased cost of our infrastructure services for the city such as roads, sewer, water, public service requirements, et cetera?" And I don't want you to do a yes or no answer to this, so would you comment on the cost of those services, please? Thank you.
So, sorry, I regret, I forgot to answer the last question. I've been to one council meeting in person, so, sorry about that. So, have I ever questioned cost? Yes. Two years ago, they did repaving onto my street. I went to the city open meeting about it and I asked them, "How city turned around and came up with the money or the idea of the budget, what it was gonna cost? How they really came up with the money? How it goes out to bidding? How it goes out to bond purchases?" And there are a lot of times, there's a lot of layers. The city, the council, department heads do not divulge because they feel that if they divulge to us, the people who pay the taxes, the people who pay the levy, we're not gonna understand. We're gonna get scared. For instance, another instance, with the new levy coming up for the high school, they give a really broad number and then even when they break it down, they don't really break it down right to pennies. And even though this is gonna be something that's gonna be started here in the future, it's always gonna be constantly changing. Prices for materials go up, they go down. If they go down, are we gonna get a discount? These are things that we turn around and constantly ask about. But unfortunately, there's no protocol to try and do a full divulge of any of those answers unless we specifically go and ask those specific questions. And then they get a little nervous. They get a little, a little wall builds up, so to speak, that they don't want to answer or they want to know why you're asking. So, how would I turn around and handle that? I would turn around and try as make it as much transparency as it can be. Again, we as citizens understand that it costs money and things change, but we also want to know what it's going to and we want to feel a little transparency and we want to know if we can save some money on here because prices reduced on material cost? Why not? Instead of going, "Okay, well, it cost $5 yesterday, but only cost $3 today, but we're still gonna spend $5." That doesn't make sense. So, for me, it's just trying to keep transparency. It's trying to keep on letting the people know what's going on.
Thank you. Steve?
So I think, like most people, if you actually start looking at your tax bills and other things, you always, always wonder where exactly is this money going? Is the money actually being used? So as I've learned more about city government, I'm actually really impressed with the people that work. They're smart people. If they're not always getting things done that you want, oftentimes it's because they're not given the support that they need to be able to do that. And so, it's not for lack of interest of serving our city. But overall, I firmly believe you get what you pay for in life. If you try to go cheap on something like a road repair, you'll be doing that road repair more times than you really want to. So I'd rather do things right the first time and save money in the long term. And so, yeah, it might cost a little bit more money to begin with, but you just save money in the long term. So, that requires a lot of communication, though, because people aren't gonna understand why you're doing something, why it might take a little bit longer, but if you're doing things right, you then avoid having your street torn up too many times. One of the things I am impressed with is the city does try to make their different departments. So if you're gonna replace, if you're gonna resurface a street, they'll say, "Hey, maybe we should look into doing the wastewater or the stormwater or the, you know, water lines at the same time." So then you're only ripping up that street once, which is gonna save money in the long term.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I think, I look at this from perspective, a little over a year ago, I became, bought my first home in Morehead. Prior to that, I'd been renting and just really made a lot more sense to pay, to pay a mortgage payment that was like only $100 more than a rent payment. And, you know, looking at going through that process, looking at tax statements and so forth, I really kind of really believe that for, in talking with a lot of others that live in cities in the Midwest, some larger than Morehead, some smaller than Morehead, you know, to me, Morehead seems pretty affordable for a homeowner. The taxes and assessments seem, at least from my perspective, seem to be pretty reasonable and that, you know, I, in the, like, 2010, when I left northern Illinois, the economy there was just so horrible that the last house I bought in northern Illinois, I bought it for like $60,000 and could only sell it for about $40,000 because you could just, the economy was just so horrible. And so, you know, you know, I think overall, from my experience, both being a renter in Morehead and now being a homeowner, is that taxes, assessments, all of that, to me, seemed pretty fair, at least from my perspective.
Thank you. Steve, I believe you're up. One of our people here commented, "We are concerned would so many major decisions be made in closed-door meetings or executive sessions of the City Council. What are your comments regarding these actions?"
So I was door knocking the day after the City Council last had their, well, the last council meeting. And I left when I thought things were done, right? You stop listening because you think, "Oh, it's done. It's been two hours." So I was actually surprised because I hadn't even read the paper. And so that's not particularly good communication practice. I understand why things sometimes have to be done in closed-door sessions, but that doesn't help understand exactly why and how those decisions are made. I'm not a big fan of, well, let's put it this way, be positive. I'm a big fan of transparency. If people know what's going on, they're going to be more supportive of issues. And if they can't know all the details, try to figure out exactly what it is that you can tell them so that they understand how the process was undertaken and why the decision was made that you made.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I would look at it this way. I guess I would look at it as an opportunity for education and so forth and, you know, look at an opportunity to explain to people, you know, you know, what, define what a closed-door session is, executive session, if people have questions, all of that. Maybe even put that on the website, things like that, or, you know, at a coffee with the mayor, something like that. Have an opportunity to explain these terms to citizens and so forth and to define them. And so, at least that way, people have, you know, an understanding of what's going on. I think for myself, I would have to dig a little bit more deeper, you know, into that. Like I said, I had sat in on parts of two council meetings, have watched bits and pieces of some others. And I'm going into this kind of looking at it as an opportunity to listen and to learn, listen and learn from other council members, listen and learn from city staff, and most importantly, listen and learn from citizens, you know, as I go out and introduce myself to people and meet people and that, and take that opportunity to listen and learn.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
So, executive closed sessions. My assumption on this question is, has to stem from the September 23rd, at the very, very last of the meeting, the council broke into executive session to discuss the sale of City Hall. How I feel about it is kind of two-part. I'm a very big fan, a very big person for transparency. We need to turn around and communicate with those who are paying our salaries, paying us to be there. People who elected us to put, sit on a council or board, they have questions and we're the voice of it, whether it be everybody in here, everybody watching, or people who don't even know us, but they live within our city limits. So with that regard, I do believe that finding out about them actually potentially selling it after the fact was a little disheartening. I also know from being a corrections officer when in my young years, that there are times, very, very specific circumstances that require a closed session. And sometimes it's to discuss extremely sensitive stuff. Doesn't mean that we're gonna be precluded from it because we'll find out what the answer is and what they talked about later on, maybe not right away. But those are why we also elect those individuals, is to try and make those hard decisions in the best interest of the community. Sometimes it is not always gonna benefit everybody. And those, what those sessions are, instead of opening up a big forum of it or a discussion of likes, of dislikes, of why we should or shouldn't do, that's what those sessions were designed for. And they were, they were set forth, looks like, from years ago, from the Minnesota state perspective. So, do I think we need to get rid of them? Absolutely not. Do I think we need to have a lot of them? Absolutely not. I think they are rare occasion. We should use it very sparingly.
Thank you. Jim, you're up on this one. "Our City Councilmen do not return phone calls or answer our emails. The question is, how will you respond to your constituent of the fourth ward?"
Well, I would take, I had thought about this and I would take the same approach that I use in my work as a housing caseworker and a housing case manager in terms of working with clients, other professionals in the community as, have a policy that, you know, I would return any phone call or email within 48 hours or make arrangements like if I'm gonna be gone or ill or out of, you know, out of touch for a while, make arrangements to have somebody, probably in this case, would have, you know, Mr. Hendrickson, if he'd be willing, the other fourth ward alderman to respond to the email. But I would be very clear and upfront about that, that within 48 hours... But I would be very clear and upfront about that, that within forty-eight hours, I would return any phone call, any email, and that if, if I don't have the answer, I would be, let them know in that response that, you know, I'm, I am responding to your phone call, to your email. I am still working on getting an answer. Once I get an answer, you know, I'll get, follow up with you with more information. But I don't want to promise that I would call them back immediately or within, you know, the next day, something may come up. So I would say within forty-eight hours, I would be pretty confident that I would be able to do that.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
So, like so many of us, I have a busy lifestyle. So am I going to be able to get back to everybody within moments of them reaching out to me, whether it be by phone call, text, email, letter? No. All I can ever tell you is I'm going to do the very best I can to always respond to your questions, respond to your concerns. I'm a human being just like everybody else, and sometimes we forget. We're imperfect human beings. I'm going to forget and I will apologize for it and I will do my due diligence to try and not allow myself to forget too many. So what will I do? I'll just do the best I possibly can to get back to all your concerns at any given time, even whether it be my ward or not. Maybe you can't get ahold of your, your councilman and maybe you can get ahold of Jeremiah. Well, so be it. That's, we're representatives of the city, not just a particular ward only. So I would just do my absolute best to get back to you any way I shape I can. Maybe even see you at Hornbacher's. So that, that's all I can do. I can't make promises. I can't give you a timeline because I don't know what happened, what will happen in the future of my life. I might, I might be in a hospital, I might, I might be working late. I don't know. So I will just always try to do the best I can.
Thank you. Steve?
So this is communication and as a educator, we, we have certain times we set aside so we can interact with the students that we're teaching. And so I would essentially do something very similar where I would let people know, or essentially in my schedule, I would schedule times where I actually am sitting down and trying to deal with city business, whether that's reading and informing myself on issues or, you know, replying to people's concerns and questions. And I think there's, there's kind of a dual edge to anything. When someone sends you a note, you need to get back to them right away to say, hey, I heard you. That doesn't mean you have the answer right away, but if they know you heard them, that's, that's, that's useful. And then you can usually kind of say, well, you know, this is, this is an easy problem. I think it'll, I think it's going to be easy. I'm going to, I'm going to do my best to get back to you in this amount of time. Or if it seems to be something that might be a little more difficult, you know, let them know that it's going to take a little bit of time, but, you know, if you think that I've forgotten, beat me again and I'll do my best to, to, you know, find an answer for you and figure out what solution is best. But it's all, it's all about communication. Now, there's the possibility that, you know, you get a whole bunch of, of, you know, communications from constituents anywhere in the city. That's an opportunity because that's, that's when you say, hey, we need to get together all at, you know, I don't know, Speakeasy or someplace, and we need to have a bigger discussion because everyone seems to have the same question. And so let's get together and figure out what's going on as a group. And so that, that's another opportunity that we can have.
Thank you. Jeremiah, you get this one. How, how can we keep our police officers? We have so many of them leave. Jeremiah?
Well, it's a great question. Police department is a very volatile department. They don't always get praised for their positive things and the positive stuff they do for our community. But they are blasted all over social media and papers for the one thing they did wrong. And that's the, something that we need to try and change as a community, is turn around and shake these men and women's hand when we see them out in the community, even if they just see them in the store and they actually want to look at us and say hi. Say hi back to them. The positive interaction between a police officer and the community that he protects is very important. And if he feels he's not being productive or he's not feeling appreciated for putting his life on the line or her life on the line, they'll go to another community. I, I've seen it happen. I have friends who float around the entire country doing that. They're looking for that one place that the community is really going to look at him and go, hey, Tom, how's it going today? Not go, that's just Officer Jones. He pulled me over last week because I was speeding and he caught me. How we keep our police officers, our men and women in uniform is pretty simple, is that we as a community need to try and reach out to them and look at them as human beings that have a very difficult job and thank them for when they do have to deal with some of the nicest things of our community. So how do we keep them? Plain and simple, we change our, our attitude, our mindset as a community and start appreciating our law enforcement.
Thank you. Steve?
So public safety is a bedrock of one of the city services that you provide. And so it's really important to have stability in that foundation. So I'm not going to pretend to be an expert in, in how to address and keep, you know, other people that I don't have a lot of experience dealing with. So I would really rely upon the experts that actually are working in this. And, you know, if you read the latest changes that the police chief has actually made, it looks like it's positive steps, going back towards more community-based policing where police officers get to know neighborhoods. That's more effective both in public safety issues, but it's also more effective in terms of making that police officer feel more welcome and not, well, as a valued member of the community, which they are. And so I think that it again amounts to figuring out how as a council member, you can best support this public safety foundation that we all rely upon.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I agree. I think certainly we need to support and thank our men and women serving in the police force. And I think one thing that's, you know, I certainly would, like Steve had mentioned, you know, defer to the experts in this and personnel and human resources and the chief. But I think in terms of, you know, police officers are dealing with trauma on a regular basis and that, and really what we can do, you know, if there is any more robust services that we can provide to support them in terms of dealing with trauma, you know, I think that would certainly go a long way in terms of, you know, providing the care and the stability that they need, you know, realizing that, you know, pretty much almost any day they're putting on the uniform, they have the potential to really face a traumatic situation or even be a victim of trauma, if not witnessing trauma. So I think that's something that we really need to be mindful of and make sure that those resources would be available for the police officers as well as, you know, fire, fire department as well, because they also are dealing with a lot of trauma.
Thank you. Steve, this question's for you to start. And again, it's not a yes or no answer. So after you say yes or no, a little bit of an explanation. Do you support the school district referendum that's going to be on the ballot this fall?
You're just, you're just lobbing me a really easy one. Absolutely yes. The schools, our children are our future and a strong school district is going to enable that. That doesn't necessarily mean you agree with everything that they're doing in the school referendum, but you also need to trust those individuals that are there. I know a lot of the school board members and I, I trust them, so I don't need to actually second guess what, what they're doing. But yeah, I, well, I've worked on other school referendums, so not to support this one would be a little bit out of character for myself. And one of the things I did find that, you know, we talked about having a certain mill rate or taxation level, and because we improved our schools, this was ten years ago, that never came to happen. Our, our tax rates never hit that, that level because more people moved in. And so it was actually a good thing development-wise for our community. And, you know, so I think the same thing happens. We improve our, our school system and we find more people moving in. We find young people, young families moving in and wanting to make their home in, in Morehead, and that's good. So yes, I support the school referendum.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, I support the school referendum. And it's interesting because I went all through Catholic schools and most, everybody in my family went all through Catholic schools. And what's interesting, and our parents always said that the key to really having a good, solid parochial school base is to have a good public school system. So cities that have really good public school systems, you know, support, you know, a good, you know, private school system here in Morehead with St. Joe's School at Park Christian, you know, and Fargo with Shanley and so forth. But I, my two stepsons graduated from Morehead High School. The oldest has graduated from M State. The youngest just enrolled at M State now. We have a young man living with us who's from Jordan, who's also enrolled at M State. And I really believe, you know, I was really impressed with the experiences my two sons I didn't know them when they're in elementary school in Morehead, but from Horizon Middle School through Morehead High, just really impressed with the staff, the opportunities for them, what they learned, the friendships they've been able to, to make and develop over the years. So yes, I certainly do support it.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
So I do not have any children and I do support the referendum. And the ba, the basics answer, or the simplest answer I can give you is because I have been part of a school system that was busting at the seams when we had forty-five students per class. And I guarantee you, I was not getting all that I was being taught. To turn around and go into it though blindly by opening up a checkbook and just giving them a blank check is ludicrous to think that. I do trust the elected people, that they've done their due diligence and turned around and looked at every single possibility, but I also love playing chess. And meaning that when you play chess, you don't play moves that turn around and benefit you right now. You look at the long game. And I would turn around and want to make sure that the school that we build now is going to be able to sustain us for the next twenty, thirty years with very little changes that need to be upgraded. I don't want to have to build another high school in twenty years with another hundred million dollar plus levy. So I do support it, but I have a lot of questions that need to be answered very specifically before I turn around and just turn around and write the check out for them.
Thank you. I should do a promo right now. A week from tonight, on the tenth, right here, same place, seven PM, will be a forum, open forum on the discussion of the school best, district referendum. So please be here. I have one question left. Is there anybody in your audience that didn't get their question asked? I believe I got all of them. Okay, thank you. Jim, you're up. This is pretty good. Everybody's been first once. Jim, what is the role of the arts in Morehead?
Well, for me, the role of the arts in Morehead is, you know, certainly includes our colleges and universities, all the wonderful programs at Morehead High with theater, concerts. It's at Concordia, MSUM, you know, I think events at the Hemcoast Center, things like that, I think are crucial and important. You know, I think there could be some more in that. In my hometown in Illinois, they dropped like a year, like a one weekend summer festival and they moved to having like a street fair once a month during the summer. So instead of having like one weekend in August, they would have like, you know, a weekend in June, a weekend in July, and a weekend in August. And that to have some music and crafts and food vendors and things like that and block off a city street. I think something like that could be, you know, certainly doable and practical. But I think the arts are important in terms of, certainly in a college town and attracting, you know, recent college grads, you know, certainly not only the college grads that are graduating from schools around here, but the last couple of summers, I've worked at the Red Hawks baseball games and I've worked with, they hire a lot of interns during the summer, you know, and, you know, what's interesting is, you know, a lot of these kids, they're going to schools outside of the Fargo-Morehead area, but they living in Fargo-Morehead, so they intern for the Red Hawks during the summer. And I think there's a way to bring, you know, kids back to Morehead and that, you know, I think the art certainly is a way to do that.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
Sorry, I, I laugh whenever time I, I think of stuff before I say it. Arts in Morehead, I think is what makes Morehead what it is. But I see the potential to make Morehead more arts. And when I talk about arts, I'm not very specific about high school, college. We have a outstanding immigrated, immigrant families from all over the world that live in our city. I'm a tribal member from eastern Oregon and I can honestly tell you that there is not enough things that take place with tribal people. Aside from that, there are, there is a huge community of immigrants from Africa and so forth. There's, far as I know, nothing we do. So if I went around and say, if we need to try and expand more into our arts, it's not just arts in our high school and our colleges and try and make festivals and stuff like that. It's to include everybody in our art, art program. It's to try and open up our eyes to a whole world out there of arts that we, some of us have probably never seen before or maybe had a deluded vision of it. Just like how majority of the world looks at Fargo from the movie and think that's what really Fargo is all about, we as people of Morehead, I feel, still have a whole world to experience out there. And art, if we open it up and really get those other communities involved and turn around and start making more of that part of it, I think then we're going to see more shops, more businesses, more things. We're going to retain some of these art majors and these college kids to stay because if they see a full volume of art and even art that we don't understand, music, very selectable music, DJing, abstract art, ironworks, there is so much art that's really out there. We have to open our eyes to not just that stuff we see at the Morehead High School or Concordia. We have to open our eyes and open our hearts to all types of art.
Thank you. Steve?
So the arts are integral to creating a welcoming and robust community. And it, I can't agree more with what my fellow candidates are also saying. Sometimes it's, it's interesting that we, oftentimes when you're in Morehead, you don't realize what a special place it is in terms of the arts. My children went to Morehead High School and, you know, they would say, ah, you know, we won this competition again and we have to go to orchestra and play. You know, it's like, you know, not very many people get to go to orchestra and play. So it's, it's kind of really cool with the opportunities that they had. You know, my understanding is that, you know, we have four orchestras in the high school. That just seems normal to us. That's not normal. Most high schools don't have any orchestras. And so, you know, we have the highest percentage of, or capita, I guess, of string players. That's something to celebrate. We do a lot of really cool things with arts. And... And, you know, it's one of the things that makes me Morehead proud. And so, I'm not going to say we couldn't do more, but, you know, the celebration of nations at MSUM is a fantastic time. And it's gotten so big that, you know, different groups, the Nepalese groups and other groups have broken off and have their own celebrations. It's clear we need to do a better job of communicating that so that everyone knows and can participate in those really great cultural events. And I don't want to, you know, say that we have, we have a lot of cool cultural stuff. You know, the Yumcoam Center has a lot of opportunities for celebrating both new and old cultures. My wife plays the Hardenfella, the Norwegian fiddle, and she's gotten me to appreciate that. And so, it's, we have a lot of really cool things that are going on here, and we can do more, though. And that's, that's, that's a great opportunity, because as you do more, we attract more people.
Thank you very much. That ends the questions we have. We're going to go into our two-minute closing now. We start with Jeremiah.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing me an opportunity to share with a little bit of who I am to and what I potentially bring to the table. I will not say I'm an expert on politics. I will say I am like seventy-five percent of the people listening right now that I have a voice when you turn and see something on TV or when you read something in a paper. And I just have an opportunity at this point to actually bring the voice to the people. I do believe everything I say, everything I represent, I do it with a full, open heart. And I also do it with an open mind, that I'm not always right. Like I said before, I'm a human being. I am going to be wrong about things. I, and the only thing I will ever ask, and I will always promise, is that I'm, I will constantly be learning, I'm constantly be getting better. So, that being said, I do appreciate your guys' time. I know it's dinner time. I'm hungry now. But I appreciate everybody's time for coming out here tonight and having an opportunity to listen to all of us. I hope it's been insightful. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
So I want to thank the League of Women Voters again for having this forum, letting the citizens to learn about the issues and the candidates. And, you know, I guess, you know, having raised my family here, lived in Morehead for twenty years, I'm not from here, although if you go a little further north, there's a Lindos Township. My family emigrated to this area, and then we moved away. And so I've lived in a lot of different communities. I grew up in Seattle or just north of Seattle, but I've lived in California, Minnesota, and the east coast on Long Island. And so, you know, I see a lot of differences in different communities, and we have a lot to offer, and there's a lot of really good things here. So, one of the things that, you know, I want to do is basically really stress that we need to create a welcoming community in our, in our area. We need to plan for the future. I really want to connect people to parks. I think that's, that's another critical issue, getting outside and experiencing our city. And ultimately, having community engagement. And so communicating with people so that we actually engage our community in their part. You know, one of the hallmarks of engagement is the fact that we have seven people running in this, in this ward. So that's, that's a good sign. That means people are interested. Ward three has five people, so that's a lot of, a lot of interest and engagement. Like I said before, I have skill sets that are, that are particularly useful, but ultimately, I think we all do better when we work together. And the diversity of talents that we have in our community is such that I really think if we're going to tackle critical issues that we have, we tap into that diversity of talent, and that's, that's what's going to move us forward. So I value your support and look forward to the election and voting November fifth.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, and thank you to the League for hosting this event and to my fellow candidates for attending. And, you know, as Steve mentioned, having seven candidates running shows that there, you know, we do have an engaged citizenry here in Ward four, in Morehead, and in the city of Morehead. What I think I can bring is, similar to Jeremiah mentioned, really listening, in that listening and learning, in that I would approach this opportunity as one of being an active listener, listening, learning to the citizens, to the, those that I'm reaching out, working with, talking with, to department heads, those on the city council presently, you know, those that we work with, engage with, and that just really having an opportunity to be present and to listen and to be responsive in that. When I mentioned, you know, I feel I could respond to a call or an email within forty-eight hours, I really believe I could do that in that. And, you know, and if I need to follow up with, if it's just, I got your message and I'll, you know, keep digging into it, I really believe I can do that. And I think what Morehead really means to me is that late July, my wife, who's from Iraq, got a phone call from a friend of hers in Jordan who has inquired about sending her eighteen-year-old son to come live with us. And like within a week, he showed up at our door, and that, we got him enrolled at M State, and he's just kind of fallen into, you know, being a member of our household and fallen into, you know, meeting friends and so forth at M State and so forth. And I don't know if you could really find that in too many other cities where you get a phone call from a woman in Jordan, you know, wanting to send her son over to, you know, to this town in the Midwest, and he comes and everything goes really smoothly and he's, you know, he's really welcomed with open arms. And I think a lot of that really, you know, shows what Morehead is in terms of how welcoming we are, and certainly know that we can, you know, improve that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our candidates, Jeremiah Jones, Steve Lindos, James McKinstra, have done an excellent job, I believe, tonight in answering our questions, adhering to our time limits, which I truly do appreciate. And make sure you find out more about our candidates and vote this fall. Now, let's thank these three gentlemen for being here. And remember that MCAM will be broadcasting this on our cable channels, on YouTube, anywhere else? League of Women Voters website will have a link. Thank you.